The order, the meeting of the November 22nd Martin County School Board. If everyone would please, I'll invite this time for the invocation Reverend Aaron Meehan for the Higher Purpose Pentecostal Church to lead the invocation.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to come here today. I love just the smiles on the faces here and the excitement in the air.
And of course, we welcome all the families that made the time to come and be a part of your welcome to Martin County. So thank you all very much and welcome. Okay, now we're moving on to.
6.02.
We'll take 6.01 when we get to action items, but we'll do board member discussion. We have the Jewel nationwide lawsuit. Is Terry Harmon here to present on this or is?
No, he is. He's not here to present on this. Chair Powers, there's just been, there's been a question by a board member or two, myself as well. There's been speculation about whether the Martin County Board may choose one day to join the Jewel class action suit. Terry, Mr. Harmon was just doing some information and if we wanted to be part of that, they would ask one of the attorneys to come and speak to you all more clearly about it. So that's, that's all that was. There's a letter that outlines that in your pocket.
So what's the pleasure of the board to, are you interested? Is there consensus that you would like someone to come and speak about? That the Martin County School District possibly entering into that?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, yes, I think so. Not a day goes by I don't see something about students vaping and getting caught vaping in schools and I think it's important we find out about this.
Yeah, and I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Harmon. I think there's a lot of questions that we would need answered before we made a commitment as a board. One being the cost.
Absolutely.
Associated with that and what the expectations would be on our participation. So we can schedule someone to come.
And there'd be no obligation for anyone to come. If they come, there'd be no obligation by the board. You just hear it and have information you could discern later.
Okay. Yes, so we'll, Dr. Malley, if you could schedule that.
We'll do that.
For an upcoming meeting, that would be great. Thank you. Okay, the Boundary Advisory Committee, Ms. Roberts.
So I know that in the past we had talked because we had done something with boundaries last year and the board at that time said that they wanted every year to revisit that. And it would be revisited at this time in November would be the normal time. So that if the board felt that it was necessary to reconvene the Boundary Committee. I don't know necessarily it's necessary at this time, but we just wanted it to always be available to the board at a November meeting. Because now would be the time that we would be reconvening it if we wanted to reconvene the Boundary Committee to be able to get the proper advertisements to correctly align where our student growth is to where our attendance zones are. So I'm.
So do we, do we have a recommendation from the superintendent?
Sure. At this time, I mean, last year it was very helpful and you all did this for our high schools because we did have the need where we moved some. As of right now, it's kind of settled. I know there's a lot of talk that's out there and I know we could pivot if it was needed, but there's no school. Martin County High School remains full, but, but the capacity will be taken off of it by your last action. So as of today, I think we're okay.
Does any board member have any questions or comments for the superintendent regarding to the Boundary Advisory Committee?
I don't think it's necessary at this time is what I'm sharing.
So if I, the consensus is we will not reconvene.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Roberts.
Legislative point person for housing. So we had decided as a board earlier in the year that we would have three primary areas of concern for Tallahassee this season, session. And it was, and each board, or there were board members that were designated as the point person who would be the one interacting with, whether it's staff, Dr. Malley, whether it's Greg with Waypoint Strategies or whoever it would be. But there were three topics. One was CTE, Career Technical, which I'm doing. The other one was early learning, which Marcia had agreed to be the point person. And the third one would be housing, affordable housing, housing, et cetera. So at this time, if there's, and that was Tony Anderson who had stepped up and said that he wanted to do it, but since he's not on the board anymore. It doesn't mean that necessarily we are picking that to do something with. It would be a board member who wants to look into that and kind of like work with the superintendent, work with our other partners. Whether it's Ed Campy, who was the person from the Martin County Commission who was looking at it, or whether it was with the city, but to kind of interact and decide whether to bring something, to bring something back then for the board to decide whether we wanted to do something. But we needed an extra person. So we're looking for if somebody wants to volunteer and step up in order to do that. So that's what we're looking at.
I don't have any problem, you know, serving on that committee with, what's the time constraints for it? Is it a meeting a month?
So it's, it's not really a committee. It would be you individually. And I would think that if you're going to do it individually, that what you would do is you would, if I were in your shoes, I would reach out to Ed Campy, who's with the county, to kind of look at it. We've gotten some information at a joint meeting. There's some information that the superintendent has.
I've seen it all.
There's, there's some of that other stuff, but then you can be able to come back and present to the board at a workshop that then the board will decide where they want to go, if they want to go, what the direction is, et cetera. But.
Yeah, we'll see. I'll give it a whirl.
You'll be the, the ears for the, the Martin County School District, basically, and, and mostly in our community. Because I don't know that we're, we're, we're in the position to really take a lead at the state level. So it would really just be working with the county and, you know, seeing where they're going and.
Well, I've heard of this Campy guy, so I'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving on to 16.01. So now we have. Okay, now, we're moving on to 16.01. So, now, we have 16.02, the Martin County School District Representative for the Florida Art Education Association Teacher of the Year. Mr. Mark Kowals is here to talk about this wonderful recipient.
Good evening. Mark Kowals, Coordinator, Social Studies and Special Projects. This young lady certainly is special. Ashley Monks, we're gonna read from... She received the Middle School Art Teacher of the Year. Ashley Monks Fan Club in attendance tonight. Welcome, welcome. I'm gonna read the words that were read by past president from the Florida Art Education Association, Dr. Jackie Hudson-Dacey. Gives me great pleasure to award Ashley Monks, the Middle School Art Educator of the Year. Ashley received her Bachelor of Science degree in art education from Edinburgh University in 2007. Maybe I shouldn't have read the year, I'm sorry. During her collegiate years, she was on the board for the Art Education Club, Ceramic Club, and Student Government. She allocated funding for all groups to attend multiple trips to their national conferences. Her first education position was at Okeechobee High School in Okeechobee, Florida, for seven years. During that time, she was the art teacher for the summer migrant camp and for a boys' camp. She participated in local art shows, winning ribbons for her individual artwork. In 2014, she moved closer to home and began teaching middle school at Indiantown Middle School. She has thrived as an art educator in our district. She's an active grant writer and has earned $40,000 in funding. This past year, Ashley had the honor of being awarded the Art Educator of the Year from her local arts council. Ashley has often stated that Martin County is a beautiful county that cherishes art at all levels. She states in her bio, she's lucky to be part of an amazing area. Ashley, we are the ones who are lucky to have you, and blessed that you get to interact with our students each and every day. So, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Ashley Monks.
Thank you. And they gave me this, like, really pretty award. It's very nice to be recognized, all these awards. My daughter, you know, gets told a lot, "Oh, your mom won an award!" And she's like, "Okay, yes, she does. She wins a lot of awards." But anyways, I wanted to say thank you, Madam Chair, and Dr. Malley, and the new school board for recognizing me. I also wanted to thank my principal, Mr. Raymond. He is an incredible advocate for our team at IMS and our students. I love him. And he's amazing. He really is very unique. Love him. And then, also, I would like to thank Mr. Mark Kowals, because he is very new into this position. And right off the bat, in preschool, I already started on him about our conference and how important it is, and he listened, and we took 14 our educators from our school to our national... Not international, our state conference. So, it was very touching that we were able to go without having to grovel at our principals for funding, for attending specialized education that is only for our educators. So, it's amazing. So, I just wanted to say thank you for this recognition, and I hope that in my future, that I continue sharing the love of learning, teaching, and sharing the love of art with our students and our teachers. Thank you. How are you?
Yeah.
Do you want me to take one for you?
Oh, in my hands.
Okay. Do you know her thing by chance? It's okay. All right. You go first, then I'll take hers.
All right.
Got it?
Got it.
One, two, three. One more. One, two. Perfect.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Okay, and next up is the annual United Way Employee Giving Campaign update.
Hello, I know, I know all you guys. I'm with United Way, in case anyone didn't know that. So, every year, we run our United Way campaign, our giving campaign with the school district. It's currently running right now, ends December 2nd. So, we've been... Me and Amber have been to, I think, over half of the schools by now. We're almost done. So, that's our little update. We're just shy of $2,000 raised, just within the school district. So, we're still trying to push that in the schools. Giving Tuesday is next week, so that is gonna be a big push for us. So, a little bit about United Way. We focus... We fund programs within these three priority areas, education, financial stability, and health. So, when the nonprofits apply to United Way... For United Way funding, they have to apply under these three areas. So, these are our funded programs. We fund 48 programs within 32 agencies for a total of $1.77 million invested directly back into Martin County. So, all of the dollars that are raised through these giving campaigns are stay local, they don't leave Martin County, and that's that total give back. We do fund one program within the school district. It's the Getting Ready for Kindergarten Program, and I have learned that that serves just under 100 kids. And it's Indian Town and Port Salerno, not just Indian... I know it says Indian Town, but they... The students that come into kindergarten are scoring higher than the kids that don't go to this program. So, it's been wildly successful within the school district.
And out of that list of organizations that are supported, there are 22 programs that benefit our students in general. So, they're impacted not only by Getting Ready for Kindergarten, but also these other organizations.
So, these are internal United Way programs that we offer. So, we have our Toys for Tots program, which is actually coming up. We're doing it right now. We'll talk a little bit about that in the next slide. We have our VITA program. It's a volunteer income tax assistance program. So, we offer free tax prep to all Martin County residents that are making a total household income of $58,000. That was last year's number, so we're still waiting on this year's number. I think it's gonna increase maybe a little bit, but it's around that $58,000. So, people come in and bring their tax information, and we have people that come in from the IRS and do all of that, free of charge. So, we have our Volunteer United program. So, we supply volunteers to all of our funded agencies. So, when volunteers come in, we kind of figure out the needs of the nonprofits and disseminate them accordingly. We have our new Ride United program, which is a partnership with Lyft. So, those needing rides to doctor's appointments, we've come up with parent-teacher conferences. If your car breaks down and you need a ride to work, you can use the program up to five times. So, there's no income restriction, so anybody can do it. So, if you're really in desperate need to get to a doctor's appointment, or just to work, you can call our office or our... Any of our funded partners, and they can schedule that ride for you. So, a little bit more about our holiday project that's coming up. We are the coordinator of all of the Toys for Tots in Martin County. So, if you see our drop boxes anywhere, they're going straight back to Martin County kids. We set up at the fairgrounds and give out toys on December 14th and 15th. It's a huge process. We set it up like a shopping center, so you come in, you have your kids. It's all sorted, like, we put the dignity back into it. Kids never have to know where the presents came from. You pick out toys for your kids. It's not a handout. It's a really amazing process. It used to be called White Doves. So, if you know White Doves, that's... It's the same thing. We've just rebranded. Last year, we served 613 families. This year, we are... We have had an increase in referrals. We're about 750 families. So, that's, you know, almost 100 more families, double the amount of kids. So, it's gonna be crazy year, but a great year. In addition to toys, families... Every family leaves with a full Christmas meal, including a turkey, and we have secured the turkeys. We're a little short on funding, so if anyone wants to donate to the holiday project, that would be much appreciated this year. We have 219 volunteers last year, 2,000 hours put in. We're starting next week. We're already at the fairgrounds, but we're gonna be there every day for the next month until distribution days, and that's a little bit more about that. We have our Students United program, which is going on right now. It's a group of high school students that you apply, and they are their own program. So, they pick their service projects, whatever they want to do to give back to the community. They earn volunteer hours. There... We create an understanding of the programs and the services that are offered in Martin County, because a lot of young people don't know. So, that's the goal of Students United. And finally, the Ways to Give. So, we have our online pledge platform that's specific to the school district. So, it's unitedwaymartin.org/mcst. There's a text number. We can get you paper pledge forms if you need them. I think there's some... And every... I know there's some in every school, but if you do need paper, you can just let me or Amber know. And there's a QR code, if you have the time to scan it, and we'll take you directly to the donation page. And that is it for me. So, if you have any questions, you can let me know, let Amber know, and we will get back to you.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you for your support, yes.
Thank you.
And thank you for being on our board, Dr. Malley.
And she forgot to tell you her name. Her name is Sarah Powers. So, I'm a really proud mom, and she's also a graduate of Jensen Beach High School. So, she's very excited for her to be working in our community at United Way. So, thank you, Sarah. Okay. All right, so we are going to now move on to public comment. It is 5 o'clock. Citizen input is vital to the improvement of our district. Most times, your remarks may be listened to without comment from board members or the superintendent. This does not mean they are heard with any less intensity or concern. Where appropriate, the superintendent and staff will investigate your comments and report back to you and the board with an answer. We thank you for taking the time and having the concern to make our district better. Your presentation to the board should not exceed three minutes. First up, we have Spam Team 180. Is there somebody here?
They said there were gonna be.
Well, they were at the airshow, and they were good ambassadors of their robot when they were there. It was very impressive. So, we'll get them back to speak another time. Courtney Myers.
So, first of all, thank you to the board for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Courtney Myers, and this is my 15th year teaching, and my fifth year teaching in Martin County. This district is currently in a losing position, losing students, losing teachers, losing clout. Martin County used to be the district where people wanted to enroll their kids, and teachers wanted to work, but that is not the case anymore. And Martin is no longer the top district in the region. While a few potential reasons can be named, some of them external, the main issue is from within. Morale has tanked, as student achievement has dropped. Research shows that there is a certain... There is a connection between teachers who are well cared for and students who achieve. As the world has changed, the classroom dynamic has changed, unfortunately for the worse. Teachers are leaving the profession all over the country, and Martin is no exception, although it should be. Your teachers are hurting and breaking and feeling neglected and unvalued, from poor health plan options to being asked to repay overpayment from an error they had no control over, to excessively drawing out salary negotiations, to now being asked to work on two of the few vacation days we have left after losing the two this week. We have fewer teacher workdays, professional development days, and rest days every year, and yet, we are piled on and required to do more and more while simultaneously breaking ourselves to contribute to the growth of our next generation. Despite the annual survey, your teachers do not feel listened to and grow more discouraged. It's time to seek and heed teacher input on regular decisions before the decisions are made, and in enough time for teachers who want to provide feedback to do so. It's time to consider teachers first in financial planning with the district budget. The students and their data may seem like the moneymakers, but who gets them where they need to be despite a whirlwind of circumstances and every obstacle that needs to be broken through? Teachers. Our profession is one of the most important in the world, and even if the rest of the world doesn't see it, at least those who make the decisions for us should see it and act accordingly. Words in this district have said supportive and caring things, but actions have loudly spoken otherwise. As long as poor decisions are made without teacher consideration and involvement, Martin County will continue to lose. To the new board members, welcome. We look forward to effective action being taken, leading to lasting changes that will return this district to the sought-after educational gem of the Treasure Coast. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Mozingo.
Thank you for the opportunity to also address the board and everyone in the room. We moved here from Dallas, Texas about 15 years ago, and one of the reasons we moved here is because we heard that the schools were so excellent, and at the time, we felt that they were. I do have to say that it wasn't without challenges, and I am so excited about moving forward with our new board members. I want to give it up for them again right now. You guys can feel free to clap. I specifically want to thank Jennifer and Amy, because I know you personally, I know you very well. I've known you cumulatively for four years, and I know that your moms, and one of you is a grandmother, so you really care about the children and the children in this community. I know you personally, and I know your integrity and how hard you worked on your campaigns and how professionally. I also know that you have thousands and thousands behind you, families, that are excited about this new turn in the school board and the exciting things that are gonna come. I pray that it gets energized for the teachers and for the students in this area. I want to see the level go up and return to what it was when we moved here. I only hear about the things, and I know it has to do with all of us, because a lot of us are parents, grandparents, maybe pastors, leaders in our community, and we can influence the people. So, I'm gonna encourage everyone to work together with this new board and this new season. Let's champion them, and let's do this together for a better community in Martin County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Nancy Terrell.
Good evening, and again, I'll echo the congratulations to the two new members and joining the solid team of Chairman Powers and Members Roberts and Di Tralisi. I was here today mostly to give a little recognition to three Martin County High School students who recently received a Martin County... Well, Martin Arts Award at the Marty's event that was held on November 3rd. Sophie Arakliou is a Martin County High School student. She was also recognized by Google for her illustrations. So, she received the Visual Arts Award. Julian Heidelberg received the Student Literary Award, and Andrea Martine received the Student Performing Award. They are all exceptional students. They joined a cast of their fellow nominees at our awards event on November 3rd at the Lyric, performing. We had the literary samples from each literary artist read to the audience, and the visual artists had their artwork up on the screen. We also recognized professional artists and presented Amanda Jones, who's a former Martin County High School art teacher with the Excellence in Arts Education Award, which Ashley won the prior year. Amanda is now at the Pine School. But it was a celebratory evening... is now at the Pine School, but it was a celebratory evening about how valuable and important the arts are in our world, and I was sitting here thinking about that this is a very historic moment, because this may be the last Reorg meeting held in this room versus in your new school board room, uh, over on US One. So again, congratulations to all, and I look forward to working with everyone to, you know, continue to showcase and highlight how important the arts are in education. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and last up is April Espanya. Hope I said that right.
Hi, and thank you for letting me address the board, and I just wanted to come up and, um, congratulate Jennifer and Amy for winning their elections, and that we fully support and stand behind you guys, and we are so excited for what's to come with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, that's all I have for public comments, so we will move right into the information-only report, so we have Sophia Norris, our student representative.
Hello. So from Jensen Beach High School, the boys' cross-country team competed in the state finals meet in Tallahassee on November fifth. Senior Nicholas Colbert finished seventh with a sixteen-ten time, he finished the regular season undefeated, Nick finished second at the district meet, third at the regional meet, and lowered the school record to fifteen forty-eight, the previous school record was sixteen thirty-one. Senior Justin Canata sustained an injury in pre-race warmups and still ran the race, he finished last, ensuring the last-place runner would not be last, what a great sportsman. The team finished second to last due to Justin not being able to run his normal fast time. Congratulations to the Jensen Beach Girls Volleyball Team, on Saturday, November twelfth, they defeated Baron Collier in three straight set wins to the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two Class Five A State Championship. Key Club raised six hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-eight cents during our trick-or-treat for UNICEF fundraiser this year. These funds will go to help UNICEF's Project Start Strong Zambia. In Zambia, three out of four first-grade students are not ready for school because they have not received proper nutrition, healthcare, and learning opportunities. You will be proud to know Key Club is making a difference by supporting UNICEF efforts to build innovative community centers called Insacus, with spaces for children to learn and play, and community kitchen, playground, water, and sanitation facilities, and a vegetable garden. Train community-based volunteers, healthcare providers and teachers to work with parents to create nurturing and stimulating environments for young children. Provide age-appropriate toys such as blocks, stringing beads, and books to encourage development and strengthen bonds between parents and children. Enviro Club is hosted a beach cleanup on Sunday, November thirteenth, from eight-thirty to ten-thirty at Jensen Beach. They are also collecting plastic bags for recycling at Jensen Beach High School. Congratulations to the Falcon Football Team, who defeated PSL High fifty-two to twelve to win the district championship. The Falcons play in the regional semifinals this Friday at seven PM at Falcon Stadium, please come out and cheer them to victory. On Wednesday, November fifteenth, JROTC took forty-five cadets to the Navy SEAL Museum in Fort Pierce. The cadets explored the boats, submarine, other watercraft, and displays outside along with all interactive displays inside the museum. The cadets stopped at Geo Joe's for lunch on the way back to school. JBHS recently donated a hundred and thirty Thanksgiving baskets and several boxes of food to elevate hope. The girls' swimming team is heading to States this weekend, we wish them all the best and hope to bring home some medals. From Martin County High School, over the summer, representatives from Martin County High School attended a conference on empowering Hispanic and Latino students. Our greatest takeaway was the need to reinstate an ELL task force. Our task force includes teachers, administrators, a school counselor, district staff, as well as our MCHS ELL paraprofessionals. Each educational expert contributes to the work here at Martin County High School to ensure a healthy school culture for ELL students. In recent meetings, we discussed strategies and potential professional learning opportunities for educators to support our language learners in all listening, speaking, reading, and writing classes to improve our language learner's proficiency and increase graduation rates. Our team led professional learning on the October thirty-first early release day. The focus of that day was to continue to provide an understanding of the diverse nature of our ELL population at Martin County High School, as well as to provide instructional strategies our teachers can use to move the learning of our ELL students forward. We provided ELL-specific professional learning during our preschool days, and have a plan to focus on instruction in Tier Two vocabulary in future sessions. Our debate students experienced a lot of success at a debate tournament on October twenty-second. Natalie Dietz, Mason Ferrari, and Cassius Jenke earned first place. Alex Bariclo, Julian Heidelberg, Linda Capps, and Brooke Ashley earned second place. Brandon Bergman earned fourth place, and Logan Mitchell earned fifth place. In their November tournament, Brandon Bergman and Martina Maruska earned first place. Noah Fetterman and Julian Heidelberg earned second place. Alexandra Dill and Logan Mitchell earned fourth place, while Sarah Palusi earned fifth, and Chloe Daniel earned sixth. Congratulations to all of our hard-working debate students and to our amazing debate coach, Richie Lizardo. On October twenty-ninth, the MCHS Tiger Regiment participated in their annual marching performance assessment at Jensen Beach High School, where they were evaluated, evaluated in their categories of music performance, visual performance, auxiliary percussion, and general effect. They earned the highest ratings in all categories to give them an overall straight superior. On November fifth, the Tiger Regiment completed in their last regular season marching band competition at Jupiter High School. They came in second place with an extremely high score of eighty-two point six. Next stop for them is state championships on November nineteenth. Congratulations and good luck to all with the final push to state championships. Congratulations to Audrey Mila, who was accepted to perform with the All-State Honors Band in January, she will rehearse and perform with the top high school musicians in the state, and we are so proud of her. Decca and Hosa are proud to announce that they have exceeded their goal of a hundred Thanksgiving baskets for Elevate Hope, and have hit a new record of a hundred and seventy baskets with the help of, with the help of NHS, Key Club, and Criminal Justice Academy. Our leadership program also contributed over fifty additional baskets. Boxes and boxes of items for their pantry will also be delivered. These items will help to ensure that families in need in our community can have a Thanksgiving meal. MCHS was happy to welcome the Leadership MC Program onto campus on November third, while on campus, the group of community leaders heard our OPUS program perform and had a Q and A session with a panel of A students. They were then able to enjoy lunch prepared by our culinary students after a tour of some of our classrooms. We are so excited to share this exciting accomplishment of both our teachers and students with the community and events like this. Thank you to everyone involved in the planning of this event. On November fourth, our MCHS Teacher of the Year, Richard Lizardo, who is named both High School Teacher of the Year and Martin County School District Teacher of the Year. We are so excited for you and proud of Mr. Lizardo, and we would like to thank him for his continued hard work and dedication to his students. On November seventh, an avid parrot night was held to share information about the program and its benefits with parents and students currently in the program. Thank you to our avid chair, Ukola Baxter, for all the, her hard work in organizing this event. Our culinary students put on a Thanksgiving luncheon for our faculty on November seventeenth to thank them, to thank them for their dedication to our school and students. This annual event is one of our favorites, we are so proud of our CTE students and their amazing talents. South Fork High School, drama has also been very busy. The cast has been chosen for the Spring Musical, The Wizard of Oz, and rehearsals begin on November eighth. This month, SGA is working on their annual support for Elevate Hope's Thanksgiving Basket Drive. We received twenty, or two hundred empty baskets from Elevate Hope, and students and staff picked up the baskets in two days. Baskets are due November ninth, we are excited about the upcoming Winter Clash of the Classes Spirit Week and the toy drive that will be a part of it. SGA loves partnering with local agencies to give back to students in need in Martin County. The South Fork Color Guard is gearing up to their winter season after having a full fall marching season. They are excited to bring home a few more first-place trophies during the season of indoor winter guard. They will have a boot camp on Saturday, November twelfth, with tryouts November eighth and tenth. Cross-country, both the Boys and Girls Cross-Country Teams qualified for the state meet. Locally, we are the only school with both teams qualifying. We traveled to Tallahassee to compete in the state cross-country meet on Saturday, November fifth, stay tuned for results. ROTC has a couple of very busy weeks, they'll be parking, parking cars at festivals, collecting for Thanksgiving baskets, providing the Color Guard at various events, and marching in the Veterans Day Parade. Spanish National Honor Society will be hosting its annual induction ceremony on Thursday, November seventeenth, after school in the plaza. We are pleased to expand our club and invite current sophomores and juniors to take part in our organization. SNHS is also leading a Thanksgiving Basket Drive for the Indian Town community, with the aim of providing hearty meals to families in need on this important occasion. Typical Thanksgiving food items such as stuffing, mac and cheese, and mashed potatoes will be collected from our members. SNHS will also be participating in this year's Hope Sound Christmas Parade on Saturday, December third, with our club members marching in the parade. Lastly, SNHS is sending student interpreters to assist families of Warfield Elementary on Wednesday, November ninth, at parent-teacher conferences. SGA was excited to award Brianna Cooper Heavenly Smiles Foundation twelve hundred and eighty-four dollars as a result of homecoming pennyworths. We presented the information to Mrs. Cooper at the pep rally, and she was thrilled at the generosity of the South Fork High School students. The Advanced Theater Class will be performing the one-act play Louder, I Can't Hear You for a competition at Jensen Beach High School on November eighteenth. The Musical Theater Class will be performing Newsies Junior on Wednesday, November thirtieth, at six PM in the South Fork High School auditorium, admission is free. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, next up we have our district update, Ms. DeShazo.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board and Superintendent Malay, happy to bring you this month's school district update. I know, woo-hoo. In partnership with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Martin County, the Martin County School District is proud to announce the revitalization of an important program that will contribute to MCSD, the ripple effect, and reframe how mental wellness support is delivered to our students. Let's take a look at the video to see how a fresh take on this classic program will help us position all students for success. Character Counts.
I said what we believe in today, is a revival of values in America, and let's collectively rededicate ourselves to character counts.
Trustworthiness.
And it's truly a community initiative that encompasses all segments of our community, including our schools, our businesses, and our families.
Respect, responsibility.
If you had some beef or tart, if you had some of the food, all of this food was prepared by our chefs at Children Girls, standing right here in front of you.
Fairness, caring, citizenship, six traits that can make a world of difference in the community.
If it's not new to my school district, when I say revitalizing it, we're bringing it from the center.
Character Counts is a program emphasizing the core virtues essential to guiding moral and ethical behavior. In partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Martin County, the Martin County School District teaches each pillar through lessons and activities.
Vanessa Woodville helps us add, if Woodvilles are a job, she helps us add lessons that the, the teachers can make on, so this message is consistent.
We love this program because of everything that you do, our young people about character, integrity, respect, all the things that we embody, all the things that we learn, and people go, no, we wanna make sure we're a serious thing, and I love the ball, so.
So it's, it's not just the school, the schools are a way to enforce it, uh, parents and families are child's first teachers, so we partner with families, we appreciate families.
The First Lady and Florida Department of Education have similar goals, reiterating how much character counts. I'm pleased to announce that five Jensen Beach High School students, two Martin County High School students, and three South Fork High School students have earned letters of commendation in the twenty-twenty-three National Merit Scholarship Program. The National Merit Scholarship Program is a renowned academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in nineteen fifty-five. This year's competition began in October of twenty-twenty-one, when more than one point five million juniors in approximately twenty-one thousand high schools across our nation took the PSAT, which served as an initial screen of program entrance. In late September, more than two-thirds, or about thirty-four thousand, of the approximately fifty thousand high scores on this test, received letters of commendation in recognition of their outstanding academic promise. Congratulations to the following students: David Firestone of Martin County High School, Calista Pearlstone of Martin County High School, Calypso King of South Fork High School, Peter Lynn of South Fork High School, Benjamin McCully of South Fork High School, Matthew R. Spillman of Jensen Beach High School, Lilac C. Molosky of Jensen Beach High School, Catherine Parr of Jensen Beach High School, Sophie E. Bennett of Jensen Beach High School, and Luke M. Cullen of Jensen Beach High School. Let's give those students a round of applause. The Martin County School District named its twenty-two-twenty-three Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year in late October, honoring two veteran educators with the awards. Jeff Raymond of Indian Town Middle School was named our Principal of the Year, and Tammy DeJames of Murray Middle School was recognized as the Assistant Principal of the Year. Dr. Malay and members of our district leadership team traveled to each school to deliver the news. Let's watch a recap of the surprise announcements. With each step, the anticipation builds. It's a big day for two special Martin County School District leaders. All of their hard work, dedication, kindness, and courage will be recognized.
Thank you on behalf of all the school district and the families and students.
Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year.
The progress you all have made, the advocacy you've had for kids, um, and just what you mean to the community at large.
An honorable title for two very deserving people. Tammy DeJames of Murray Middle School, the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Assistant Principal of the Year.
A great career as an assistant principal, always helping administer all the programs, you've helped improve instruction, you have, for many years, worked with athletics, if there's been after-school events, I see you often DJing them, emceeing them.
I came here because of the family atmosphere that Martin County brings and the high standards of academics, and I honestly have witnessed that in the, in the last eighteen years I've been in Martin County.
And over at Indian Town Middle School.
Well, uh, today, we're with Principal Jeff Raymond, congratulations on behalf of Martin County School District, we're naming you the twenty-two-twenty-three Principal of the Year.
I feel I was given a gift to have a career here in Indian Town, I genuinely love our Thunderbirds. Those who know me, I, I love this community, and I love being a Thunderbird, and it's been the greatest honor to serve, um, and to lead here with this team. I'm a very lucky man, and, uh, probably share these flowers with my family, and, um, and I thank my family for, um, allowing me to do what I love.
Congratulations, Principal Raymond and Assistant Principal DeJames, thank you for everything you both do for the students and families of the Martin County School District. South Fork High School held its annual International Bacchalory at Pinning Ceremony earlier this month. During this event, families and friends watch as graduating IB seniors pin their junior mentees, commemorating the junior's entrance into the diploma program. The evening's keynote speaker was Mr. Brennan Keeler, a member of South Fork High School's IB class of two thousand. Mr. Keeler currently serves as legal counsel for the Palm Beach County Police Benevolent Association, he resides in Hope Sound with his wife Krista, who is a member of South Fork's class of two thousand and five, and their family. Congratulations to our graduating and our rising IB seniors, your commitment to educational excellence is to be commended. Let's give them a round of applause as well. If you've blinked recently, you've probably missed tons of new experiences being offered to students enrolled in our numerous career and technical education programs. The Communications Technology Academy at South Fork High School has leveled up with new equipment and furniture purchased by the Pew Foundation. Academy participants master Adobe Photoshop and produce the school yearbook, in addition to many other forms of content for the school. This lab is also home to an esports after-school club, where teamwork, communication, and strategy are all part of the game plan. Students enrolled in Martin County High School's welding program are currently mastering safety procedures and learning to cut metal using an oxy-fuel torch. College and career-ready labs have arrived at Indian Town Middle School. These compact learning stations will allow students to explore concepts related to careers in healthcare, criminology, engineering, space exploration, architecture, construction and building, dental care, design, and more. Our eighth graders are beginning the process of exploring the variety of career and technical education courses that are available to them in each of our Martin County High Schools. Families are encouraged to visit our website to learn more about CTE and our school choice process, which will begin in the spring and permit students to apply for attendance at the school which houses their chosen program of interest. And until next time, you can find us wherever you scroll, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, next up, we have the superintendent's update.
Good evening, Chair Powers, Vice Chair Russell, and, uh, members of the board, a special welcome to our newest member, so happy to work with you, ever since your election, I've been able to get to know Ms. Pritchett and Ms. Russell, we met weekly, to kind of prep them and let prep them and let them start answering questions and tell them more about the district, the board's history, and whether it be finances, or facilities, or curriculum. It's been really nice transitioning with you. So here to make sure our staff gives you the very best service and relationships that you need to do your job. So, welcome. On our first item up there, I guess maybe before I get right into that, I just want to share a couple of things that, before we hit that, a couple of things about where we're at with the school district. The, I just want the public to know that we work really closely with our teacher unions and with our ASME unions. And part of the Florida Constitution, which we care about, support, and follow, is that that, those processes are in place to protect everyone. So, we've made, as a school board, on behalf of them, the school board just objectively has made countless strides the last few years in teacher compensation, ASME compensation, Florida and Martin County now, beginning teacher salaries are the highest they've ever been. They lead the nation, and our name is among that. As far as the ASME union, the $15, getting up to the minimum wage this evening, it may have went unnoticed, because maybe we don't toot the horn enough for the school board, but they've compensated our bus drivers, which has been one of our, one of our greatest challenges, the workforce there. So I want to thank the board members for what you're doing to make sure we can get kids to school. So, just a lot of things going on. Several things are. It's not just a Martin County issue. It would be a Florida and a US issue, some of the barriers we're facing. But I want to direct the community, if they'll go sometime, when you go to our great webpage, and I thank Jen for that, but you can click on many links. You could click on the school board, but you can click on the superintendent link. And right under there, my picture, you're going to see a link that takes you to the Word app, the Early Years Matter. And I don't share that as some great answer, but I think the reality of where we are, where we've been, and where we're going, they're three different things. So, we're very proud of our past, but as our population, our dynamics have changed, our, not just the community makeup, our financial, we're adjusting to meet those changes. So, again, I'm grateful here to our board and let the community know that what we're doing to improve, a strong focused reading, English-language arts program, for the first time really consistent with fidelity across the entire district, a strong math program, K-12, all throughout the district, with all the supports we need to follow the Florida state standards by the Department of Ed. It's been a learning curve, but over time, it's, 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 it's not, it takes time. Some of these areas, it just takes time. So, we are meeting the needs of our students. I'm so proud, and I give the credit to our staff, our teachers, our assistants, our bus drivers, our maintenance workers, you name it, whoever, I don't want to leave anybody off, but all the support staff, kitchen employees, all the support administrators, everyone's working together. So, I just want to just kind of remind the community that some of the, even though, I don't want to get back into COVID, but some of the things that the country went through, some of the staffing shortages, they're still real. They're still real. Martin County did a fantastic job pushing through, stand open, the focus of our teacher and administration. So just wanted to share that and let the community know that the glass is certainly half-full for both the students, the community, and the future of Martin County schools. So, appreciate that. And one thing that makes this great, to preview this, it does center on our teaching staff. So, I wanted to watch this video of our elementary, middle, and high school Teacher of the Year, and overall.
I'm proud to announce the winner of the 2223 Martin County Teacher of the Year.
Stop, back up, rewind. Let's start at the beginning of this momentous night, the annual Education Foundation of Martin County Teacher of the Year Awards. The amazing decorations, jovial dancing, and colleague camaraderie.
Witnessing school spirit reach a fever pitch for an evening that is all about celebrating educational excellence is something that is unique to Martin County.
All leading up to recognizing each school's Teacher of the Year.
You can do it. The work is not easy, but don't forget that we're not alone in it. Every day that you show up at work, you're where you're supposed to be. You're there on purpose for a purpose.
And then, the elementary, middle, and high school Teachers of the Year. Rachel Reinhardt from Port Solano Elementary, Monica Poole from Stewart Middle, and Richard Lissardo from Martin County High School. Now, back to the drumroll for the big announcement of the evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Education Foundation of Martin County and the Martin County School District, I'm proud to announce the winner of the 2223 Martin County Teacher of the Year to Mr. Richard Lissardo, Martin County High School.
He's not sure why he was chosen, but he thinks it must have something to do with his unique perspective and hard work to make every student and coworker feel invincible.
I think that every student should feel as though they have the opportunity to be successful and to win. I tell my students that winning isn't everything, but wanting to is. And so I try every day to ensure that I'm creating a space and an environment for them to feel like they can win, even when the cards seem stacked against them.
Congratulations to every Martin County Schools Teacher of the Year and to Mr. Lissardo.
Great. Proud of all those students and our teachers. Happy for our students that they have such great professionals. Before we get into this last, this next portion on Speak Life, I wanted to quickly update our board on, not only have our students making some great progress academically, we have focus there, but the facilities of what Martin County offers are tremendous. So, right after Christmas break, kind of in the quiet it's been in the community, Jensen Beach Elementary School, Palm City Elementary School, they're nearing completion. I mean, fantastic investment by the taxpayers of Martin County, Mark Seacrest, and his team of people. They've kept these projects going. So, right after the first of the year, we're planning on opening Jensen Beach Elementary shortly thereafter, about eight weeks, right at the March, spring break, right thereafter. We look at doing Palm City right behind them. So, pretty much, they've stayed on schedule. But it's exciting. We're going to let you come see it behind the scenes, and we'll let the public know. We'll do soft openings to get the schools transition. Just when the new schools open, the old schools and the busyness of the campus will be eventually torn down. So, we're going to kind of plan a really nice ceremony over time with the community. But those schools, the community should be very proud. And then we just, just, the board knows, they've approved the Stewart Middle School project. We're still working on some water issues. However, we finally got the full go-ahead while we were doing some minor things on the campus. The main building that you approved is now underway. And then out at South Fork, that was a very multi-project, where you had the heating HVAC plant for the entire, we had sports facilities for the entire building. And of course, we can't wait for that new gym. The, we had some permitting holds on the actual building, but it's just a hurdle. We're almost there. But the sports field, the chillers, that's all happening. They've moved on that. And actually, even though our building's a little bit behind where we would have liked to have started, all the infrastructure of a lot of the things we would need, the steel, the things that we're construction, constructed with, are coming in. So, when we get that final go, which is going to happen, that project will be the third phase of it. So, I'm really proud of that. And then I just also want our board to know that I went out to South Fork High School. They have the huge golf course, the greenhouse, the ag programs. And in your five-year plan, you've invested some money there. So, I'll be bringing that conversation to, in the coming months that we'll have. But basically, we're looking at revitalizing that golf course, making sure that greenhouse, it's time that it gets replaced. And I know there's people in the community that want to help us with this. So, I'm just saying, we want that help. We want to partner with you as we can legally. We're excited about that project and what's going to happen to the whole South Fork campus. And then last but not least, when we have great meetings like tonight, a lot of proud moments with our, our board, our district, our students, the district office. We look to have it done sometime in the summer months. There was a few delays with that, but we're still on target for the new district office meeting room space. So, I wanted to share that. This next portion is the Speak Life in Bullying, and I want to just thank, it's been work great, working with Dan Byrd and the community on this. Ag Campy years ago was instrumental in kind of helping with this, and our board has been on board with it in full support. So, that, we did kick that off in our schools, and I think we're going to, it's going to bear a lot of fruit for the future. So, let Jen play that.
Speak Life.
You have the ability to make a change today.
End Bullying. It's a musical turned film with a powerful message.
This is a really, really impactful film about bullying, and you know the many ways shapes and forms of bullying takes place.
Most of Speak Life and Bullying the Musical was filmed here in Martin County, with some scenes taking place on Martin County School District property. And MCSD students benefit because every Martin County middle and high school student watches and learns.
Thought it was really good. I just thought it was a creative way to, like, show awareness of bullying, because most presentations are long, they're boring, and people don't really, like, it just goes through one ear at the other. This one actually made it interesting, made people listen.
It talks about, like, the victims of bullying, and also the people who are doing the bullying, but also their victims in their own way, because they have a reason to bully. Not that it's okay, because it's not, but they have their reasons.
The message relates to these students for various reasons.
I connected mostly with Caleb when he was in the locker room, because he was going through that, like, mental breakdown, kind of, of his parents talking to him about his grades and also being there for the team.
I think Emma was a huge one, especially, like, with the cheerleading. I feel like now, like, being a high school girl, it's something I really struggled to fit in with. A lot of the stuff said was true. It does happen. And I think it was important that they addressed that.
Students not only learn about different types of bullying, but also how to make a change, how to make everyone feel seen and safe, with the help of Martin County High alum and pro football player, Justin Simmons.
I never really, like, sat down with my parents, saying, like, hey, like, I'm stressed, and I need help with this, and I need someone to talk to. So, I think that, like, I'm also going to open up to my parents more definitely.
I know that I have, like, the resources. I have, we have a whole bunch of clubs here, and we have the resources to stop bullying. Now, it's just, like, implementing it and stopping that problem of isolation.
The Martin County School District aims to be a safe place, but if students ever need help, they can always call 1-800-273-TALK to speak about life.
I want to remind all of our families that are out there, this is just one way that they know the Martin County School District and School Board takes bullying, harassment, and then other areas that we deal with with our community, maybe drug abuse or alcohol-type things, that we're constantly, we're aware of this. Social media puts it out there, and sometimes you might see these issues and think, oh, my gosh. Well, I'm here to remind you, 99.9% of what goes on, again, in every Martin County school every day, is very, very good. Sometimes, we're not as excellent as we want to be, but we're improving. But also, with social media can blow things up. But there are lots of alternatives. There are programs for kids and families, and if they hear something, we want it. That's the good part of social media. While it's a little aggravating sometimes, we love, if they hear something, we want to know. We investigate that. Our buildings are safe. So, I want to thank again the taxpayers of Martin County for that investment in safety and security that helped us upgrade our, all of our schools. So, a little update there. And then I'll leave. If you have any questions or concerns or considerations.
Any questions? Comments? Okay, thank you. So, just for the new board members, typically, these information-only reports, the first three are presentations. The rest, probably, as we get into the legislative session, we'll probably get a little more of an update if it's pertinent to us here in the Martin County School District. But if, these are for the public and for you to review, and if you have any questions or you want to discuss one of these reports, now's the time to say, or if you have a question about any of that, now is the time. We won't go through every one of these. They won't be a presentation. They're for you to read prior to the meeting and for the public to have as a source of information. So, are there any questions about the remaining information-only reports? Okay. All right, moving right along. Board Member Information Share, the Master Board Program, Ms. Roberts.
Just a reminder, we're signed up to do the Master Board Training that's coming up from Florida School Board Association on January 23rd and January 24th, all day on the 23rd, and then in the morning of the 24th. Just a reminder for that. Thanks.
Thank you. And then, the 2223 Committee Appointment Preferences. I know that Ms. Roberts included that with the agenda. That's a time, so you'll get, be getting probably a communication from Diane Falls. There will be a list of all the committee appointments that we have in, within the district, but also within the community?
Yeah, it's in here.
Yeah. And you kind of put your preferences, and then we'll announce those at the December meeting. So, we try to accommodate as much as possible what your preferences are. All right. Now, we move on to action-only items. We have item 21.01, which is School Board Travel. Per Florida statute, the public has a, an opportunity now to comment on any School Board travel that, before we approve it. And we will be approving School Board Travel for our new, two new School Board Members to travel to the Florida School Board Association Conference next week. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve the School Board Travel? So moved, Roberts?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Mr. DiTrlezi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 21.02, School-Wide Improvement Plans. Are there any questions? Or, Ms. White, or Dr. White is here. Do you have any specific questions on the improvement plans? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. DiTrlezi, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Chair Powers, could I just ask you a question real quick, or let the board know? Working with Ms. Pritchett and Ms. Russell, when I said they've been preparing and reading, we're also going to plan some visits to schools. Not, we'll try to get everyone over the course of the year. But if any of the board members, you know, if you want to come and see some of the different schools, feel free to reach out to me, because we're going to, there are so many great things happening, and I know you all attend things, but I'm just extending that welcome out to the other board members, if you'd like to visit certain facilities.
Thank you. Okay, item 21.03, School Advisory Council Memberships. Any questions on that item?
Madam Chair, I had a question on that.
Okay.
I noticed that some of the, the School Advisory Councils were light on parent involvement. I know that that's often an issue, but can you, and I'm sure there's something that's being done to try to get more parent involvement, but can you please keep the board updated as to when those, the composition of those student advisory council change, so that we can know that there's more parent involvement? Thank you.
So, do I have a motion to approve the council memberships?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move approval of 21.03, School Advisory Council Memberships.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. DiTrlezi, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 21.04, requisitions to be approved over, for purchase orders over $100,000. Any questions on any of those? Okay. Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Mr. DiTrlezi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item 21.05. This is for electrical service replacement project. Are there any questions for staff on this project?
No, Madam Chair. I'll move approval of this item.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. DiTrlezi, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
601.
Oh, yes, thank you. So, we're going to go back to item 6.01 that was pulled from the consent agenda. So, now's the time that, if you want to ask a question, Ms. Pritchett, about that item, and then we'll vote on it after.
I just wanted to know if it's paid for ahead of time, or are we approving the payment of it tonight?
Sure. I'll update you a little bit on that. The program started, we piloted with two schools this past year, and they chose to pay for it, like, out of their own, as they were looking, seeking for ways to improve. When we were looking, it was so good, when they came to speak to principals at the large meeting, which we had the 25 schools, other principals were like, wow. So, then we thought, maybe we need to look at this for the whole district, whereas we train all the principals and their secretaries, to get on the same page. So, that, this portion, we're asking for the whole, but there are two pilots. So that, this portion, we're asking for the whole, but there are two pilots that they chose out of their funds to do, but, so that's, we wouldn't authorize the full until you do it, unless there's, anything else you want to add, Mr. Main?
No, it has not been paid for yet, we wait for approval and then we move forward.
Okay, I just didn't, when I looked at it, it looked like it had already been paid.
Right.
So I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion on item 6.01?
Move approval of item 6.01, the Breakthrough Coach.
I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Dieter Lisi, a second by Ms. Pritchett, all the, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no school board policies right now, but you all will be seeing lots of school board policies that we have to update. I know that Ms. Roberts was, gave you a big binder, I'm sure, with color codes and all kinds of stuff.
How to build a bookcase for it.
Yeah. So as the chair, I'm probably going to allow her to continue on that project because she has it so organized and I am, she has to give us instructions on how she organized it so we know what we're doing. So we'll be getting to that. So now is time for open to the board. This is an opportunity for board members to make any comments or bring up anything that you would like to talk to, to your fellow board members about. So we'll start with you, Ms. Roberts.
Sure. I want to say congratulations to the Jensen Beach High School volleyball team. I think that they had some, I'm sure that will be in a future coming update, but congratulations to them. Also looking forward to the holiday performances at each of the high schools, and you all will be getting lists from the superintendent's office that tell you where those are, so you can be able to attend those. And thank you to Dan Byrd and the Speak Life group for all those presentations that they're doing for secondary, and also thank you to the staff for the hurricane shelters. And then say congratulations to Amy and Jennifer, looking forward to working with both of you and working towards a family-focused district and kind of maybe leading the state and showing what that can actually look like. So appreciate it and glad you're here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dieter Lisi?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Roberts for your chairmanship. You are an extremely organized person and I thank you for that, and I thank you for your years chairman. It's very well recognized, appreciate that. Thank you, Dr. Malley, for your explanation that you just gave in your opening, that was very nice. And welcome to our new board members. I wish you both the best in your term here. And I did want to give an update because there's a young man who's a, an athlete at Jensen Beach High School that got injured in, in, in his practice, and he had a spinal cord injury, and he goes to our church and he was told that he probably would never walk again. And lots and lots and lots of people came to prayer. And the other night, there was an event in Fort Pierce called Miracles on the Water, and that young man showed up on his feet walking when he was told he would never wa, almost never walk again. And he is now, according to his parents, he is running, and this is just several weeks after the incident that put him in the hospital, flown by Trauma Hawk to Palm Beach County, and he is not only walking, but he's running and wanting to play ball again. So it's truly a blessing to that family and to, I'm sure he'll be a blessing to our sports program, but a great, great event and a great thing that happened to that family. So I want to congratulate Austin and his family for such a blessing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pritchett?
Well, thank you, everyone. Happy to be here, I'm looking forward to working with everyone. Thank you for your service, congratulations and congratulations. I don't know if this is the time, but I wanted to know if we could discuss possibly changing the December 19th and 20th dates to other times during the year, as long as the kids are in school and they get their education. I think it, it might be worth discussing possibly giving them other times so that they can enjoy their Christmas vacation. I just wanted to put it out there.
Okay. So I guess that's a procedural question on, because it wasn't advertised on the agenda. So Mr. George, can you tell us if, if we have consensus from the board in taking up that issue, then if you could let us know what we would need to do?
So in the background, Dr. Malley, within the calendar, has what he did, the recommendation and of the use of the days. You as a board, because it wasn't an event that utilized all days, instructional time is still met if those days on the 19th and 20th weren't used for student days. So you all have the discretion to make that decision. To do so, you would need to set a special meeting.
Okay.
Where there's at least seven days' notice from publication of that meeting, and then that would be when you'd be able to hold the meeting, hear from the public and hold a vote if that was something you all wanted to do.
Okay, thank you.
So what's the pleasure of the board? Are you all interested in having, calling a special meeting to, to talk about this item?
So, Madam Chair, so the, the way that, just as a background, the way that the calendar works is every fall, there's a calendar committee that's appointed, that is made up of teachers, staff, people, Dr. Miller runs those meetings, it also has people that are appointed by school board members. And they come up with a calendar that falls within the parameters of giving the correct amount of instruction and designating emergency makeup days, et cetera. So the calendar that we're living under now, the 22, 23-year calendar, was presented by that committee in the fall of 2021.
Correct?
21. And it was approved in the October meeting. And during that approval, it designated that that 19th, 20th, and 21st were actually hurricane makeup days.
Right.
So that was on the calendar then. The calendar was adjusted once after that, in February of 2022, there was a minor adjustment made, so it came back to the board, we looked at it and we approved the adjustment. And then, so that calendar has been published for a period of time. So while I appreciate the, the, the information and the feedback, whether it's through social media or whether it's through the handful of emails that we've gotten, the reality is that it is a, it's in my mind, it's a published calendar that has identified those days. These are not days that have been added to the calendar. These were days that were designated by the calendar that said these are days that we would use for hurricane makeup days if we wanted to, the Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday piece. So on one hand, it's kind of like you have families, you have some families that interpreted that as meaning, well, maybe they won't make them up, so I can go ahead and make plans. It wasn't like we, the superintendent or anybody decided all of a sudden, oh, let's pull these days out of the air and make people come to work. I mean, that isn't the reality of, of the way that it worked. And then there are families that I've run into, some families that were like, you know, thank you for, for promoting academics and thank you for, and they've talked to some of their neighbors and have come back and said to me, we knew all along that there was a potential for these to be makeup days. And these aren't dates that we're talking about came because of Hurricane Ian, we're talking about Hurricane Nicole, which was actually in November, so this is something that's kind of more recent. From my perspective, I think that, one, the more academics, we're not where we really should be with our students, whether it's because of COVID, whether it's because of student learning losses, whatever it is, that the more academics that we can have our children doing, the better off it is for those children. I've talked to Dr. Malley because some of the emails that I've gotten have said things like, they're just going to come in and watch movies. And so why are they coming to school if they're just going to watch movies on those, on those days, you know? And Dr. Malley has assured me that the intent is not for them to watch movies, the intent is for them, for actual learning to be happening. And I kind of feel like that since it was advertised that way, and that's the way that we said we were going to do this, that that's the direction we should go. I know that there was an email that was sent to all of us that came from M C E A that was suggesting taking one of the professional development days and changing that to a school day, which I think there's already plans that have been made for the professional development day. So I don't know whether that's appropriate to dump professional development and say, let's have everybody go to school instead, and then pick up two half-days, you know, and do that. So I'm kind of of the feeling that we should just continue with the way that we have advertised that we were going to do it and the way that parents have expected that we would do it. So, but that's just me.
Not to misunderstand, I wasn't saying those days should just go away, I was thinking in terms of using other days that might be available. I want instruction to continue.
Sure, yeah.
I'm not looking for a wash, just to be clear.
Yeah.
Okay, thank, thanks.
So I had a conversation with Dr. Malley and he actually had a good idea. I, I totally agree with you, Ms. Roberts. I, I don't believe that the days should go away. People got paid for the two hurricane days, so they should actually work again, four hurricane days. So those two days, we should get back. And our students lost those days. So if the students are as important as we believe they are, and educating them is that important, then we should be making those days up. And they've been on the calendar since 21, when, when the calendar committee, and that's why we have a calendar committee, for those purposes. So, but whether it's no, December 20th, 19th and 20th, or whether it's, you know, when you have a half-day, if you want to add half-days, because Dr. Malley said there's a couple of half-days in, was it February, May, no, not May and June, was it?
No.
I, I, my goal is like yours, Lee, that it, they have to, I don't want them coming to school to watch movies. There is no, there's no reason a student should come to school and watch movies. This is, I mean, we're here to educate students, not let them watch movies, unless there's some educational value to that movie, but honestly, I think we're beyond that, maybe a first grader or something, but, you know, these kids need to come to school and learn. You're right, there's slippage, there's, you know, COVID has really wreaked havoc on it, the fact that, you know, so many of our students don't even speak our language. We've, we've got a lot of problems and we've got to, we've got to start really bringing this, bringing this back up. And you heard it from speakers today. So I'm all for them coming in, and I'm, I'm okay with it being on the 19th and 20th, but if Dr. Malley has a better idea that may take a few half-days and move them up, or one day, one day, one day later on in the year and two half-days, I'm okay with that too. And I don't mind giving him that, that authority to do it if we have that authority. You know, he's running the organization. If we're in school half a day, we have the people there, we have the buses in operation, we have the, the facilities open, just make it a full day. And, and if it's a couple of those, let's do it, I'm, I'm good with that.
Madam Chair.
And the other thing is if people have planned a vacation, then let them go on vacation. I mean, how many people are we going to miss? I don't think it's going to be 50% of our school, it may be 10% of our schools, so, you know, I'm, I'm good either way, but, but we need to, we need to make up those two days, so.
Great. Mr. George?
So I just want to remind the board that the actual issue of the dates is not on this agenda, so the discussion shouldn't really be on the dates, it should be whether you all want to hold a special meeting to make a decision.
Oh, good, I'm okay having a special meeting to make the decision on the dates.
Did you want to say anything about this issue? Or did? So I am, I, I just, I feel like, you know, as a board, we, we create the calendar every year. It's a very public process, we involve all the stakeholders. We did not, and we don't usually expect to have two hurricanes very close together. So the fact that we did, it, I, I know it's an inconvenience, but, you know, as this approved calendar, this gives the superintendent his authority. That's how the board gives him the authority to do that. And I'm not interested in half-days that a lot of that time is utilized for teacher professional development, it's utilized for teachers to get together, have, have their meetings after school, even though they're leaving, you know, the kids are only leaving two hours earlier on a, what they call a half-day. So I'm just, I think we would be going down a path that we, we, we have to trust the process that we set up, we've never really had an issue with this before. We've had hurricanes, we've had back-to-back hurricanes, and we've had to make up more than two days some years. So I'm, I'm ju, I just kind of feel like I get it, some families didn't, you know, made plans, and, you know, they have to make that choice for their family to not come to school, and I totally understand that as a parent too, but I don't think that we should change our process because it's, you know, an inconvenience. It's, it is what we voted on, it's what we advertised to the public, and it's what gives the superintendent the authority to say, we're going to make up two days. I follow his lead. When he asked me about it, I'm like, it's, it's his decision because that's the approved calendar. So, you know, I'm not really interested in bringing it back to a special meeting. That's just my opinion, so. So how are we, who would like, I guess we could say, who would like to bring it back and who is, would like to just remain with the decision made by the superintendent based on what was approved by the board?
Hearing the explanation and getting everybody's way in, I, I understand it and respect what you're saying, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so these are all, you know, as, as new board members, these are all things that, you know, you'll, we, as we are able to talk like this, it's really, sometimes it's uncomfortable to have these conversations, there, this one is a really uncomfortable topic, because obviously we are not going to please everyone with decisions that we make, but we purposely added these opportunities for board members to share things that they're hearing from their constituents a lot of times, to bring things like that up, but to listen to each other and understand the reasoning for the decisions that we make. So this was a really great discussion and it was a good one to have at our first meeting. So we will move forward with the calendar, I'm getting that feel, and the superintendent, with the superintendent's decision for those two days and we will not hold a special meeting. Is that, is that what the board?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Russell, did you have some comments?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who came out to support Amy and I today, elected officials who took time out of their busy schedules to come here. I'm very humbled and honored to be in this position. I hope that as people take the time to get to know me, you'll know my heart and you'll know, you know, my heart for the students in this district, for the teachers in this district, and the love that I have for them here. And I look forward to working with my colleagues to really improve our school district and continue the good fight, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I want to say congratulations to Jensen Beach High School volleyball team. They won the state championship, as Ms. Roberts said, it's pretty awesome. Both of my girls have had the opportunity to be coached by Coach Sawtelle, who is becoming quite the legend in Martin County. And he's an amazing coach and he really creates amazing athletes and young women in our community. So congratulations to all of them, and I look forward to welcoming, welcoming them to a meeting in the future. I know United Way, please consider supporting United Way through your school, through the annual giving. They do support our transition to kindergarten program here in the Martin County School District, which as we know is one of, early learning is one of our priorities. So as new board members, if you haven't gotten your information about your pledge, you know, if you're, if you're so desired, there's no requirement that anybody does it, but they do support really great programs in our schools and in our community that support our students through other not-for-profit organizations as well. The Education Foundation, the House of Hope, so many great organizations that provide, techs and teens that provide mental health services to our students. So I encourage everyone to look at what they do, and if your heart moves you, please donate. Speak Life, I have been, I've heard so much positive feedback from parents and students and how their parent, the students have been coming home and telling their parents how wonderful it was. So we thank them for, for that program and they were really engaged in that. Welcome to the new board members, we're really happy to have you and work with you in the coming year. And thank you for your trust in me to be your board chair, I really appreciate that. Thank you to Ms. Roberts, an amazing school board chair, she has, as always, leads us through some of the toughest things that we deal with, but is so organized and keeps us all on task, and I don't- is so organized and keeps us all on task. And I don't expect that, just because she's not chaired, that will not go away. She will still keep us on task and organized, I know. And then finally, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, to our staff, and to my colleagues, the superintendent, the community. We are very lucky to live in Martin County and be a part of this community, and I'm thankful every day for each of you and what you do for all of our children. So happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, seeing no other business before the board, we will adjourn this meeting at 6:08.